Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 14th, 2021 Regular Board Meeting of the Presaic County Board of Education. We have some special guests with us tonight. We have Michael Holmes and Boy Scout Troop 805 with us. Welcome. They're here working on their Boy Scout badge. They're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. If you would all stand.
My pledge of allegiance. To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an agenda. Is there any necessary changes?
No recommended changes.
I just want to announce we have Ms. Light is not with us tonight out of abundance of a caution. She was exposed to a grandchild she was taking care of, and she just wants to be safe and she's be with us virtual. Are you there Darla?
I'm here.
All right, great. Thank you for joining us. First off tonight, we have recognitions with Dr. Cindy Salome. Oh, I'm sorry, the agenda. Is there any motion, please, to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Tom?
Second.
By Wes, all in favor? Unanimous. Go ahead Cindy, thank you.
I'm just going to stand in her place. I'm Cindy Salome, and it is my pleasure tonight to do our recognitions and our Superior Performance Spotlight. I would like to start with our seventh grader, and her name is Sienna Hikes. She's from Liberty Middle School. Come on up, Sienna, let everybody see you. We're not, we're not, we're not going to fight you. We're not going to. Sienna, as a sixth grader, won the 2021 My Perspectives Six Through Twelve Poetry Contest. It is a national competition, so congratulations. And those of you who are here to support, I thank parents and principal and teacher. Please stand, let's give them a round of applause for their support. Thank you, Sienna. Next on our recognition, I am proud to announce that Lambert High School's girls golf team played for the national championship in June at Pinehurst, North Carolina, and they finished as national champions. They won. They won by 27 strokes over the next team. And then all of us have to stand, please, in the end. The seat turn around, please. Their coach is Shane Fortenberry, so please give them another round of applause. And those of you here who are here, please stand. All right, I know we've got some mamas in the crowd, I know. You've got to stand, let us wave. Congratulations.
Yes, this is Iris Cow. She's a rising senior this year, a reclined senior, Sarah M., Jr., and Catherine Shane, Jr.
And I hear from our systematic director, they got a chance to do it again.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Great. Congratulations. And now it's time for our Superior Performance Spotlight. It's Pools Mill Elementary, and I'll turn it over to Paige Andrews, principal.
All right. Thank you so much for inviting our team here tonight, and I get to talk about my favorite subject, the Pools Mill Pirates. So with me here are two fabulous administrators behind me. I have Sandra Phillips and Vicky Sipsey, as well as Cassie Shoemaker, our IT, just in case when I double click and I make that transition, things don't go well. So hopefully, everything's going to go smoothly. All right, so our journey began with Pools Mill. Dr. Salome called me one day in November and asked me if I wanted to go for a cup of coffee. And in HR land, that means you high tail it up here as quick as you can to see what's going on. So when she talked to me about opening Pools Mill, and then ultimately, Dr. Bearden asked me to open the school, I was thrilled with the opportunity, and it's been an honor. Right after I was asked to be principal, I formed a group of colleagues. Vicky Sipsey joined me, as well as my personal secretary, who used to work for Wits Carlton, and also my data clerk, who has a background in construction. So the four of us began meeting. We met every month, and a lot of the ideas that you see in here and the collaboration, it happened in those beginnings, and then we brought on fabulous people like Ms. Phillips and Cassie Shoemaker to help, you know, realize our dreams for the school. So our theme this year is finding joy in the journey. So as you can see, just look at the way Pools Mill is growing. We have gone, we ended the year with 821, and right now, we have 930 students. So that area of the county where we are, and I'm sure that Mr. McCall can attest to that, is growing. And so we are, we have new pirates every day. I think we welcomed four yesterday, so very exciting. When you first walk into Pools Mill, the first thing that greets you is our mural. That was one of the risks that we took in the beginning. We wanted Pools Mill to be special, and our building is just so beautiful that we actually wanted to enhance and honor it by doing things that were beautiful. Oh, there we go. So you can see that mural is actually, it was done by Scott McIntyre, and he began it the summer before, so when we opened our doors, that's what greeted our students. So we're very, very proud of it and think that it's a real, a show, a showpiece in our building. If you look around at, at the lower right hand, you will see in our cafeteria, we have the polished marble or polished cement floor, and we have another beautiful mural done by Scott McIntyre of another ship. We actually have about five ships in our, in our building, five different pirate ships. Probably my favorite place in the entire building is our media center. We kind of took a little risk there, too. I think, I know that when I was working with Brad Richardson, and we talked about having a circulation desk that was a pirate ship, that was, he thought we might have been a little bit crazy, but it actually turned out quite beautiful. And when our little ones go into the media center, that is the focal point. They're just so excited to be able to check out a book at a pirate ship. I mean, how cool is that? So you can also, we have a leave, a legacy mural, and part of what we did when we were opening the school is we wanted to open with all these fabulous things, but we didn't necessarily have the money. And so one of the first things we did was look for partners in education who could help fund the little extras. The building was beautiful, the furniture was beautiful, but we wanted to be able to add these extra little touches. And so we have a leave, a legacy mural, and where our families are able to be a part of our media center, your media center mural. Also, one of the exciting things that we have in our media center is a virtual reality center, and you can see the kids in one of those pictures, being able to be a part of that, and the other pictures are of one of our specials classes in there. So one of the unique things about Pools Mill is that we were the very first elementary school to open with a STEM lab, and you'll see these pictures in our beautiful STEM lab. Our kids have enjoyed it, our community is very proud of the STEM lab, and of course, we have the interactive playground. I'm going to see if I can make it go. So, very, very cool. Mike Evans actually approached us and said, we want to do something special for Pools Mill. We want to be able to have you open with this interactive playground. It can do anything. You can have a dance off. It's just super cool, and you can imagine how our kids love it. Oh, sorry. There we go. When I was talking about some of the things that we did, we had some goals in mind, and we wanted to open up our school with a fabulous teachers lounge, and a lot of times, that's one of the last things that you work on in a school, but we were committed to just doing something special for our teachers. So one of the things we did is that our partners in education actually sponsored these tables that you see here, and we have small little plaques and things around the room recognizing the people who donated. So we were, our, our teachers love this little oasis here in our building. And also, we wanted to open our building with special things in our, for each grade level. So in K1 and 2, we have those, the tables that you see actually have casters. As a former first grade teacher, this was just like the best thing ever. You can have a separate little table, you can move it together and do group work, and so the flexible seating in the classroom was just something really special and that our teachers and our students have really enjoyed. You'll also notice we have reading ottomans and reading tables. Our reading tables are a little different. They're star shaped instead of the traditional kidney shaped tables. They take up less space in a room, and that's also something that our faculty has really given us a lot of positive feedback about. And for our upper grades, we have the cafe tables that you see, and I guess one of the best features about them is it's impossible to turn over those chairs. And if you're a fourth or fifth grade teacher, you know that kids love to lean back. Well, you really can't lean back in these chairs, so very safe, and our pirates have really enjoyed them. So we are a leader in me school. We were actually, we, our sister school, Vicry Creek, actually kind of donated our initial fees for leader in me, and they have actually, Shay Warman, who is a counselor there, has been working with our staff from the very beginning to help us become a leader in me school. So I love the collaboration and how other schools have come together to make Pools Mill an even better place. So I love working with other schools, and all of this, all that we've been able to accomplish in leader in me, we owe to Vicry Creek. And so our teachers and our staff are very excited about leader in me, and our students are too. So you can see the different tenants of leader in me, being proactive, begin with the end in mind, put first things first, think win-win, seek first to understand, then be understood, synergize, and sharpen the saw. We've also worked to try, one of the things we wanted to do was to be able to give our students leadership opportunities. Right here, this is actually our beta club, and they act as ambassadors in our building. We let them, you know, give tours when we had open house this year for the one day. They were there in their t-shirts, giving tours to our families. We also have leadership opportunities in the way of working on our news crew. We have peer helpers, and we also have safety patrol. And our students actually, they actually submit like, not a resume, but they submit, I'm trying to think, an application in order to be part of all these. So we're very proud that we were able to give these leadership opportunities to our pirates. And future pirate additions. So we're dreaming big here at Pools Mill. We actually, we have made enough money. We did Boosterathon this year, and we are going to be putting in a track. We have, I know it was kind of a, a topic of conversation, we had, our 3-5 playground is enormous, and it's a good ways from our building, and it's worked out that it's been a real asset to our school. So we're going to be putting a track out there, and our community is very excited about it. From the very beginning, we have planned to put a track on that field. We have even put our playground equipment in the middle so that we can form the track around, so we're planning for that. We also want to put a pavilion out there, and in the back of our school, we are going to put in a sensory garden, and we want it to be the entire length of the back of our school, from one area to another, where our bus lanes are. We want those to be different types of sensory areas. So we were very excited that we won one of the foundation grants, and that's going to give us a start to our garden. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
No, I, we love Pools Mill and our territory and our, our little district over there, and you know, one of the things when we started this process, we always talk about, and Dr. Bearden says, is that the school is the hub of that community, and you guys have really embraced that, and so thank you so much. You know, the parents are excited about it, the kids are excited about that area, so, and it's because of you guys and your leadership. So thank you very much for all you, your hard work.
Well, thank you very much. It's been an honor, and we've got a wonderful community, so thank you.
Talk about beginning with the end in mind. You're already, you're already there. Can't wait to see that sensory garden. What's your timeframe on that?
Well, everything is like a, a five-year, and we hope to get one part, and there's six different areas back there. So we're going to, with the grant that we received, we're going to be working on two of those areas. But when I was at Silver City, our garden took us about five years from beginning to end.
That's a big project.
I think the other thing to note was the time capsule. That was pretty neat. So they, they all placed a time capsule with things of today's modern day technology, and I think in, is it 25 years?
25 years.
They'll, they'll open it up?
I have some pirates who are committed, maybe Cassie there will come get me from the oaks and, and check me out so that I can be there. But we're, it's, it was an exciting opportunity, the first school to have a time capsule as part of the opening.
That's something like future partner in education opportunities there for your sensory garden, though. All right. Well, I think we will take a brief break right now. If there's anybody that would like to cut out before we get into the more business portion of our, our program, but if anybody was here for the recognitions, if you'd like to leave, you're, you're cut out now, but if you feel like they're safe, you're a meeting, we're welcome to do that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm happy to be here.
You have time.
Of course.
So moved.
Second.
Darla, you good with? Okay, thank you. Next up, we have presentation and discussion, this finance report with Larry Hamel.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to discuss the August 2021 financial reports, and we have the new format. If you have any questions about the format, please ask questions. As always, we have goal three in mind when we talk about financial statements. For August 31st, 2021, we started the year, month off with about $80 million, and we ended the cash and cash equivalent in the month, about $67 million. This time last year, we're at 45.6, so we're way ahead of schedule where we were previous years. Part of that money also came from the CARE Act 1, 2, and 3 as well. On the revenue, we're at 9.46% collections. This time last year, we're at 9.27%. We're a little ahead of schedule, and last year, we only collected 43.7 versus the 48 million this month. On the year-to-date budget report, there's one new line item in here I pointed out last time, is that month-to-date, so you actually can see what we spent for the month now in comparison to the actual year-to-date. We spent 17.41% year-to-date for the month of August. This time last year, we're at 17.54, so we're slightly less than what we spent last year. So we're doing a little bit better on the revenue and a little bit less on expenses is where we want to be the whole year. On our debt service, we have a total of $90 million in our accounts. The debt service account has 33.2. We were at 28 last year. Our SPOS 5 account has got 57. We are 27. And of course, SPOS 5 treasury is only $10,000. That's a holding amount in there in that account, and we had T-bills of 8.5 million this time last year. That account will eventually go away. All that money will be moved over to SPOS 5 account as we get ready to pay down SPOS 5 in terms of the bond payments and what's left in there to use for other items. Special revenue funds, this is another new screen that we're allowed, we're supposed to have based on Senate Bill 68. As you can see right now, we've got about 7.6 in revenue and 7.6 in expenses. $7 million of that year-to-date, that's money that we got for CARE Act 3 money that came in, that we requested, came in a little late, but we got it, and we've got about a million and .3 spent. Most of that's Title I and title, special ed money for salaries and benefits. On our capital projects, we started the month off with about $31 million. We paid out $18 million in facility acquisitions, finishing up paying for East Forsyth High School, Hendrix, things like that, and we're down to about $23 million. That $23 million is going to carry us through the rest of this year and next, and there's a little bit of money in investments from earlier when you saw it. So there's enough money in there to get us all the way through New Hope this time next year, but most of the capital projects should be down to close to zero by this time next Investment summary, just to point out, there's, if you look under Fund 306, there's the other part of your capital projects money, the $33 million in addition to others. We currently have $105 million in investments. This time last year, we had $190 million. You can see how we're spending that money down. This is always a good news one to talk about, SPOS 5 collections. So we're averaging about $3.6 million average. The last 12 months, you can see, is 4.239. That just kind of tells you how the last 18 months have been with COVID. We're averaging about $211,000 more than we were this time last year, and the 12-month average, we're averaging $864,000 more than we were this time last year. And overall, just in the last 12 months, we're averaging $653,000 more per month than we have total average for this period. On elementary schools, this time last year, we had almost exactly same amount of money, $4 million. Receipts and disbursements are about normal for this time of the year. On the middle schools, we had about 1.48, so we're up there as well. Also, receives and disbursements are about normal, both for middle schools and high schools, and high schools are up 5.6 this time last year at 4.3. And what that means for us in terms of just looking at this pie here real quick is, we're at 11.3, so we're up from 9.8 last year in terms of ending balances for the month of August. But the one thing I do want to point out is that the high schools now make up 50% of all the balances and all the money at the school level, and last year, it was only 44. So they're up 6% in total, and that's all been at the decrease of the elementarys. They're down to 34, but they were 41% this time last year. So that just kind of shows you how the, the shift in money has happened because of COVID. And that's the financials for August 2021. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Larry.
All right, thank you.
The bond numbers and SPOS show that wrapping up the projects as we promised, everything's getting built as we said, and the SPOS revenues are coming in positive, which we expect.
You can talk more than that if you want to, but we're on schedule for all the projects to be finished, and most of them are on budget or below budget. There's a couple of things that might be a little bit over budget, but that's just because of the change orders and stuff at the last minute.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have strategic plan timeline with Mr. Mitch Young.
All right, well, it's been five years. So here, here we are again with the strategic plan for our next five years. First up, before I start, I just wanted, I want to say off-script, which always gets me in trouble, but it was great to see our students honored tonight, to get back to that part, and it's a great reminder for all of us. We get caught up in numbers and strategic plans and everything, but that's, that's the why behind our what. So I appreciate the board bringing that back. Okay. So reading a book not that long ago by a gentleman named Jeff Henderson, who some of you are familiar with, he used to work with Chick-fil-A, North Point Ministries. He's out in his own business now. He wrote a book called FOR, F-O-R, and the premise of the book really is built around these two questions, and I really think it's, it's questions that, that guide a lot of what we talk about with strategic plan, and it, and it's as any organization, whether you're a school system or a business, first question you have to ask is what do you want to be known for? What do we really want to be known for as a school system? The second question you have to ask is what are we known for? And the gap between those two questions, what we want to be known for and what we are known for is where the strategic plan comes to life. That, that's where we do our work. And so the, the process that we're beginning begins really with trying to answer these two questions. What do we want to be known for? What are we currently known for? And that's why the first part of this process is all about our community engagement. And so I'm going to just kind of go through this timeline with you, and as you have time to process this and want to shoot me questions throughout the, the weeks ahead, please do so. But beginning very, very soon, right after fall break, LeAnn Rice, who you're going to hear from in a little bit, Associate Superintendent with Teaching and Learning, and Jennifer Cratchlow and I have been working on getting a questionnaire together that will work both for accreditation process, as well as some questions that'll, that'll guide our strategic plan, and those stakeholder surveys are going to go out before this month is out. We want to expand the timeline for that. The normal timeline for that is two to three weeks. We're actually going to leave that survey window open from fall break, when we return from fall break, until Thanksgiving, because we want to encourage as much feedback on that as we possibly can. We're also going to be sending specific questions out to our local school councils for feedback, and then, and I'll get to the details of this a little bit towards the end, but we're going to have community focus groups. In the years past, in the last two strategic plans, we've had one evening where we've had community focus. We're going to expand that to three evenings, again, to try to, to try to encourage as much community input into this as we can. Again, strategic plan is really your 30,000-foot view of where we want to go as a school system, and, and we think it's vital that we get as much input into that as we can. So the first phase of this begins with September through November in, in collecting all those surveys and, and feedback. The second part of that is the planning committee, which will be made up of community members and business leaders and leaders throughout our district, and they will review all of the feedback that we get, our survey results. We also have accreditation that will be going on from November. The, the part of their process will go, you know, all the way until I believe the end of January. I'm not going to get into that because that's LeAnn's territory, but we should have everything that we need back from that, as well as everything we've gathered in September through November, to have all the information we need for this planning committee, to begin prioritizing what's important to us as we answer that question of what do we want to be known for, and what are we known for. This is the, this is the phase where we will review our mission statements, our values and belief statements, where we'll even look at things like the learner profile to see if that still stands as to, as to the direction of where we, where we want to go. Those will be refined or rewritten or reworked, whatever, whatever's needed at that point, and from those big picture items, we'll have our, basically our high-level performance objectives, our, our big level goals and priorities, and then that will lead us to the next phase, which is the, okay, this is where we want to go. How do we know we're on track to get there? And, and then what are the plans to get us there? And so that takes us into Phase 2, which will be March and April. That's where we'll have action and accountability committees that will actually determine the targets that we have, the measurables, to get to where it is that we say we want to go, and the action step. So, the first phase of this begins with September through November in, in collecting all those surveys and, and feedback. The second part of that is the planning committee, which will be made up of community members and business leaders and leaders throughout our district. And they will review all of the feedback that we get, our survey results. We also have accreditation that will be going on from November. The part of their process will go, you know, all the way until, I believe, the end of January. I'm not going to get into that because that's LeAnn's territory. But we should have everything that we need back from that, as well as everything we've gathered in September through November, to have all the information we need for this planning committee to begin prioritizing what's important to us as we answer that question of what do we want to be known for and what are we known for. This is the, this is the phase where we will review our mission statements, our values and belief statements, where we'll even look at things like the learner profile to see if that still stands as to, as to the direction of where we, where we want to go. Those will be refined or rewritten or reworked, whatever, whatever's needed at that point. And from those big-picture items, we'll have our, basically our high-level performance objectives, our, our big-level goals and priorities. And then, that will lead us to the next phase, which is the, okay, this is where we want to go. How do we know we're on track to get there? And, and then, what are the plans to get us there? And so, that takes us into Phase Two, which will be March and April. That's where we'll have action and accountability committees that will actually determine the targets that we have, the measurables, to get to where it is that we say we want to go, and the action steps for achieving that. And once that is done, then we'll take it back to the planning committee, where again, we've got community and, and business and school district leaders sitting down to review those plans, to review the action steps, to see where we are, if there, if there were any changes to beliefs and missions and that sort of thing. And once that is complete by the end of April, at that point, then we come back to, to you all, hopefully with a, with a presentation for approval for our next five-year, our five-year strategic plan. I do want to point out, I added one more side of this, the, the community engagement focus group sessions. What we're going to do is bring together vertical teams for those. Those are going to be hosted by the Alliance Academy for Innovation. Talk to Ms. Canizero, she's very excited about hosting. It's a, it's an easy on and off from Georgia four-hundred, fairly centrally located for everybody. So, October twenty-sixth, you can see there that, that these are the vertical teams that we'll have. And these are not just high school folks. These are the, these are the, you know, the high school sort of gets the name, but it's, but it's members of elementary, middle, and high, parents and, and community members and teachers at all these levels. November first, you'll have the Central, East, and Denmark vertical teams. And then, November eighth will be the West and the South vertical teams. And we're, we're really looking, looking forward to that. We'll, we'll have the Georgia School Board Association, it's who facilitates these throughout the state, so they'll be partnered with us on this. And we look forward to having some roundtable discussions and, and some real civil discourse and, and putting together the, the direction for the next five years. Any questions at this point?
No, I just say, thank you very much for all your work on this. I think that over the last couple of months, it's become very important to the five board members that we involve the community in this process. And I think that you just pointed out three different phases to this whole project, and it's going to take some time, and we're going to take the time and do it right. But all three of those phases included the community. So, thank you so much for listening to us and making that happen.
Yeah, I think Wes is right, it does take time. I mean, I co-chaired one twenty years ago for the school system, and I remember presenting it. When I presented it, I began with the, the words moving out like Star Wars, because it was way out in the future, and it was revolutionary in a lot of cases, some of the things we were suggesting. And so, this is very impactful to our system and very important to driving us to the future. Now, twenty years ago, while it seems like a long time, it wasn't that long ago. And so, you know, it took us that long in some cases to get there. So, the strategic plan gives us real good guidance to that. And so, we ask everybody to be involved.
Absolutely. Yep.
So, if, if someone wants to go to one of these meetings, is there going to be more information? Like, is it sign up or?
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're actually, we're, we're putting together the, the marketing of it or to get the word out there for, for how they can sign up to be a part of these. It's, the community engagement sessions themselves are open to the public.
Okay.
For participation at roundtables, we'll, we'll be putting out some, some sign-ups. We've identified some folks through these meetings that, that we'll also be reaching out to, that we want to, we want to make sure we have a fair and, and balanced cross-section of, of everyone from our county, so that all viewpoints and all voices are heard. Absolutely.
That's great. Thank you.
Yep.
Already put a lot of work into this, so, it's a long process, though.
Well, I, I have had good teachers in Jennifer and, and Joey Perkel, and I mean, this is, you know, we've had great folks working on these for the last twenty years. And so, I'm, I'm tapping into a lot of them for, for guidance on this.
Darla, do you have anything you want to add?
No, looking forward to getting it started.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, going along with that, we have the accreditation timeline with LeAnn Rice.
Good evening. Well, and as Mr. Young said, we're working collaboratively since these both events are happening in the same year. We want to make sure that we're utilizing our communication really effectively. And so, a lot of the things you'll see are parallel in the processes and in the communication plans. So, we began our timeline with accreditation back in June at our leadership retreat and gave an overview to our district leaders and our principals. We're in September right now, and we are in the process of completing our school improvement plans this month. We've also selected our teams and schools. When accreditation happens, then there'll be teams that are formed to help identify our self-assessment, where we are in different standards, and help identify the documentation that shows that performance level. And then, there'll be schools that are visited to showcase those specific standards within a building, not just at the district level, but at the school level. Mr. Young had mentioned an online survey. We have those dates scheduled for September twenty-seventh through November nineteenth, so from fall break to Thanksgiving break. We've combined what would be two different surveys, so that we are asking parents for feedback, and that information can be applied to both accreditation and strategic planning. And then, as Mr. Young said, he's going to begin holding those focus groups for strategic planning. So, it's going to be a great way to get parent and community input on the front end of the accreditation process. After fall break, the week of October fourth, we'll start our kickoff meeting with all of our design teams. We have three teams that focus on leading, learning, and resources, and so, we'll kick that off. Ms. Cratchlow and I will do that. And then, they'll work on each of those teams, will work on the documentation and the ratings, and that needs to be completed by December seventeenth. Throughout that time, we'll continue to update everyone, we'll work with the, continue working with those focus groups and collecting the data from the online survey. And then, as we move into January, our visit will be January twenty-third to twenty-sixth. That's a Sunday through a Wednesday. It will be a virtual visit, so we have people from all over the country that'll be tuning in, they'll be looking at our documentation that we've uploaded, and they'll also be conducting some live virtual interviews. So, they'll be meeting with parents and students and teachers, community members, administrators, and digging deeper after they've looked at our documentation to ask further questions. The district-level team, again, is made up of Jennifer Cratchlow, Tim Keizer, and me. We're working together alongside Mitch to make sure that, that our communication and our planning is very effective. As I said, there's three performance standard teams, the leadership, learning, and resource, and those are the co-chairs that'll be facilitating that work throughout our district. Each of those teams has you represented, as well as our principals that aren't being visited, and different cabinet members and county office staff members, so that we get a wide representation of both a school-level view and a district-level view of the work that we do. And then, at the bottom of the slide, I have listed the schools that will actually have the virtual visits. We are selecting ten elementary schools, three middle schools, and three high schools. And I think we've chosen a wide variety of schools that are going to showcase all the great things that we do here in Forsyth County. What questions can I answer for you?
The only thing I would like to add is that when Cognia comes in, they give us our standards, our performance standards that we have to meet. We have that available on the website, so.
Correct.
The community can go look to see what those standards are and then how we're meeting them, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. So, for example, within the learning performance standards, there's fourteen specific standards that, that we will show, we'll rate ourselves where we fall on a continuum, and then we'll upload documentation to show evidence of where we've met that standard.
You're welcome. It's going to be strange doing it all virtually, though.
I'm a little sad. I think, you know, if they came in, just the, the community, the environment, we have such a great welcoming environment. But I think in some of these visits, we'll be able to showcase that through, through some videos and some uploads that we can do. And hopefully, the interviews will also show our passion and dedication. And most importantly, I think, hearing from our students and our teachers and our parents when they get to interview those different groups to hear firsthand our stakeholders and, and how they think we're doing as a school system.
It could actually show how we shine, because we are so used to it, that we might actually shine compared to other systems, because we are so.
We've become quite adept at virtual.
So, maybe, maybe it'll actually be a positive for us, so.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Darla, do you have any questions? Darla, do you have any questions?
I had to switch the, I had to switch the screen. Now, I'm good.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms.
Thanks, Dan.
All right. Next action items, we have the, to rescind the policy IDCH on dual enrollment with Dr. Tim Keizer. This was a new one, as we talked about. Yes?
Yes. So, the State Board rule for dual enrollment no longer requires that local boards have a separate policy. So, our recommendation is to rescind the local policy and allow State Board rule and local regulation guide the work.
I'd recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any questions, Mr.? I know I called, this is a new, new thing for me, so any questions? All good? All right. All in favor? Unanimous?
Um.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you.
Next, we have the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three elementary school redistricting timeline approval. Mr. Mitch Young. I presented that last week.
Okay. So, in the, in the time since last week, it actually came up at the meeting last week, we had a, a scheduling conflict for the public forum evening, and I just wanted to publicly make that adjustment on here. If you, if you look at the timeline, where it says October eighteenth, that was originally October twenty-first, but we, we moved that up to the eighteenth to avoid that conflict. Central is able to house us. So, with that change being made, I would recommend Dr. Bearden this timeline for approval.
Recommend timeline approval for the redistricting.
Motion, anyone?
So moved.
Motion by Tom.
Thank you.
By Lindsey. Any questions, concerns?
When will this be on the website?
I think probably by tomorrow.
Usually by the morning, so.
Yep.
All right. All in favor? Darla?
Uh, yes.
That's unanimous. And next, we have the Distribution Center Property Sales Tech, Sales Contract Ratification
Good evening. I want to first applaud you all. When the lights go out, you just keep going. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Twenty-year-old building, they happen. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Distribution Center Property Sales Contract Ratification. The details for that is that we have done all of our due diligence. We've gone through the hundred-and-twenty-day due diligence of borings and surveys and everything that is required of us to purchase property. We are asking the board to recommend and purchase the fifteen-point-seven-six-one acres that will house the future distribution center for the Forsyth County School District. The entire building itself will be roughly around fifty-seven to fifty-eight thousand square feet with over forty-six thousand square feet of actual racked space and storage space. The current building that we're in right now houses both half of maintenance and what we try to do as a distribution center, and that building alone is just under twenty-four thousand feet. And we're trying to run multiple programs out of that. So, this is a great addition to the district. We'll be able to provide a lot more resources for the district, be able to store more things, and be able to provide that at an easier cost when you're able to buy things larger bulk and be able to store it. So, again, without any questions, I would ask, you know, if you have any. If not, I would ask Dr. Bearden to recommendation the board to approve the purchase of the fifteen-point-seven-six-one acres along Keith Bridge Road for the new Forsyth County Distribution Center.
Recommend approval.
Second.
Motion by Lindsey, second by Tom. Any questions? I know.
Good.
All in favor? Darla?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next up, we have public participation. Just want to remind everyone, the last meeting we had, I thought we had a really good session of public participation. Everybody was very respectful. Again, we have three minutes per person to speak tonight. I'm going to ask that everyone is respectful and lets everyone speak and have their moment of time. Tonight's first speaker up is Hank Sullivan. Is he here tonight? I don't see him. All right. The next speaker up, then, is Jeremy Crishell.
Last month, I extended an invitation to all those who disagreed with me about DEI to have lunch with me, and I'm grateful to report that someone actually took me up on my offer. The young man, Declan, was actually the son of one of the speakers last month, a math teacher, who praised the children who have spoken here in support of the DEI program and who eloquently expressed his desire to be a support for all the children he encounters in school, even though he is a straight white male. Now, I don't think our lunch changed anyone's mind, but I did learn a great deal about Declan's point of view. Declan was very concerned about bigotry and was thoroughly convinced that conservative bigots that he had met through his life were largely representative of all conservative thought. He was also an outspoken and dedicated Marxist and Communist, but thankfully, he was unwilling to condone the use of violence to impose his vision of utopia on the world. It struck me that Declan was incredibly sensitive to the many corruptions one can find in our systems and truly believed that a properly constructed system of Marxism and Communism would eliminate the possibility of corruption. When the subject turned to capitalism in what was probably the most ironic part of our conversation, Declan was surprisingly incredibly supportive of Big Pharma. He, the epitome of capitalist corruption. He truly believed that it was impossible that any corners had been cut in bringing Trump's Operation Warp Speed for vaccines to reality, where he was otherwise willing to be incredibly skeptical about capitalist systems and the corruption that can happen in them. He was absolutely positive that the system of big pharmaceutical, pharmaceutical companies could not possibly be corrupted. For any of you who have been touched by the opioid epidemic or know anything about the Big Pharma corruption that bought us OxyContin, it can be difficult to imagine someone trusting Big Pharma so blindly. But more importantly than our discussions about politics and economics, I learned that Declan loved and admired his father and refused to put him in the straight white mailbox when it came to diversity. Though he cited studies that suggested that people of color cannot perform as well as white people if they don't have teachers that look like them, he was adamant that people of color taught by his father would not suffer any disadvantage. Now, when my father used to buy me and my brother a candy bar, he'd make one of us split it and make the other person choose which half to take. It was a system of checks and balances that helped keep things fair. I'd like to suggest the same sort of check and balance system for our diversity, inclusion, and equity program. If we are going to promote something that is mostly a left-wing political point of view, let's put some right-wing people in charge of its implementation. Make sure that the staff who are running the DEI program have impeccable conservative credentials rather than social justice bona fides. Make sure that the DEI programs chosen are approved by conservative stakeholders as well as liberal ones. There are anti-racist trainings out there that don't demonize white people or insist our country or schools or white people are inherently racist. I look forward to working with the board and the school district to bring, bring true diversity, equity, and inclusion to our institutions, focusing on individuals rather than groups. Thank you very much, and my offer to talk over lunch to anyone who disagrees with me is also open. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is James Limming.
Good evening, once again, members of the board. I am James Limming. I use he/they pronouns, and I am a junior at Denmark High School. I want to use my time to talk about my eighth-grade school year at DeSantis Middle School. That was the year I came out as transgender. I came out to my school first, telling everyone that I went by James, and then soon after to my parents. This includes six staff members from my school, the art teacher, Angela Pettit, the chorus director, Christian Bigliani, both school counselors, one of them being Carolyn Moore, my science teacher, Deborah McCormick, and the librarian, Tess McMillan. So much happened that year, but I want to focus on the important things. All of these people were so incredibly supportive of me. The day after I came out, I actually went straight to Ms. Moore and Mr. Bigliani, and it was great. It was kind of funny, because I hadn't really verbally come out before, so I hadn't specifically told them that I was transgender. And so, when I came out, when I told Ms. Moore that I came out to my mom, she said, "As what?" Because she'd only really known me as James. The reason I bring up these teachers is because of the small things they did in my eighth-grade year that if I had had homophobic or transphobic parents, could have quite literally saved my life. I remember in art class one day, Ms. Pettit asked if it was okay to send her, send a letter home with the name James on it. It was such a small gesture, but it meant the world to me. I remember Mr. Bigliani letting me wear the men's outfits for concerts, because even before I had come out, I was uncomfortable wearing the dresses. I remember panicking one day that my parents would find out that I was trans before I was ready to tell them, and the counselors helped me out and emailed my teachers to let them know to use my dead name if my dad went to curriculum night. curriculum night. I remember being one of the only people to get a bonus question right on a science quiz, and when there were people in my homeroom talking about me behind my back, Ms. McCormick stood up for me and told them to focus more on their work and less on me, so that maybe next time they could also get the bonus question right. And finally, I remember Ms. McMillan creating the most amazing safe space for me. She was always there to talk, to listen, to recommend books, to talk about music. All of these little things can mean the world to someone who is struggling. The DEI program is not a program to force kids to learn about everyone and everything. The DEI program is a training for teachers so that they know not to send a letter home with the name Connor on it if Connor's parents don't know he is Connor, so that they know not to grow concerned when fasting holidays are happening and a child isn't eating, so that they know how to handle it if a student has a panic attack at school, so that they know how to stand up for students when the student can't stand up for themselves. So many stupid mistakes can be fixed with a DEI plan. In ninth grade, a group of kids was making me uncomfortable after I called one of them out for transphobic actions against me in middle school, but now that we're juniors, we've grown and we've learned that transgender is just the thing that some people are, and it's stupid to care what other people identify as. With the DEI plan, these transphobic marks, remarks would not have even happened in the first place because we would have already learned that being gay or being trans is not a problem. Members of the Board, I urge you to keep this DEI plan. Reevaluate it if you must, but keep the basis of the plan that will help students feel safe in their own school. All, anyone wants, whether or not they support DEI is for students to feel safe in their school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kristi Dibella.
Good afternoon. I am a mom of a fourth grader at Sony Elementary. I received an email on August 20th from Mr. Bearden stating they are rolling out a Keep Forsyth Safe campaign, a campaign, the synonym of which is to push. A campaign or push will be included in the announcements to the kids directly. In the very next section, it states, "There will be no badgering," which the synonym is also to push. The very day this rolled out, my son was approached by another child telling him he needs to wear a mask, which is the very thing you said wouldn't happen. In addition to badgering our kids, you're putting them at high risk for respiratory issues or worse. I am going to demonstrate what really happens when you wear a mask. I brought my carbon dioxide monitor with me and a cloth mask.
It currently reads...
It's not plugged in.
Oh. 480. I'm going to put on for 13 seconds. It's reading 758 right now. It is up to 915, 925. If this was plugged in, this thing would read 4,000. But I didn't get it plugged in this time, which is 10 times over the limit.
I can do this again next time. This thing reads 5... That's okay. Um, so, according to the General Federal, or the German Federal Environmental Office, in June 2021, they say carbon dioxide exposure of 2,000 parts per million is the limit. This thing will go up to 4,000. If I had it plugged in, I'll do it again next month. I just, all I'm saying is that our kids are inhaling three times the amount in 15 seconds, and they're on, they're, they're, they're having these masks on all day. All I'm saying is to reconsider a campaign, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ariani Dipada.
Good evening, Board members. I'm Ariani Dipada. At one of the past meetings, someone stated that Forsyth County isn't racist. If it's not racist, then why was it a sundown town that drove black people away? If it's not racist, then why was Fort Campbell, a fort that would round up people of the Cherokee tribe and put them under horrible conditions located right here in our county? If it's not racist, then why are there signs all over the county right now saying "no" with a red dot, meaning no dot heads, a slur said to the Hindu community as a retaliation to the new Hindu temple being built? Last Saturday was 9/11, and while we mourn and show our respect to the people who passed away and the courageous first responders, we fail to acknowledge the increase of Islamophobic hate crimes. The way we teach kids about the September 11 attacks, it matters. If my teacher taught a little differently, maybe I wouldn't have had a classmate tell me to not blow up the school or been asked if I had a bomb with me, and maybe I wouldn't have been called Osama. Right now, in our county schools, there's at least one brown kid being bullied, being called a terrorist, or having other students joke around saying they did 9/11. Teachers play a factor into how students view themselves, how they view others, and how they view the world. DEI training for staff is crucial. Even having one less kid feel isolated is a win. I can stand up here every single month and face these inadequate parents. I can keep fighting, and I will, but I shouldn't have to. I shouldn't have to fight for an equitable education. My friends shouldn't have to fight for the future of the next generation of kids that are being educated in this county. I also want to discuss something else that concerns me today, which is the dress code. There was a protest against the restrictive and sexist dress codes in Forsyth County schools last Wednesday. Why are young women and female presenting people sexualized for our shoulders and our stomachs, and since when did our legs become distracting? I'm not asking for you to completely abolish the dress code or to let us wear whatever we want. I'm asking you to implement a dress code that is reasonable and one that doesn't punish any student for showing their shoulders, their legs, and a bit of their midriffs. I urge you to reevaluate the dress and grooming code. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Sophia Zhou. Amelia Tang.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Amelia, and I've been in the Forsyth County school system for over 11 years now. Tonight, I'm here to speak to you about the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan. I think misinformation is one of the biggest issues I encounter and hear every time we congregate. An argument many seem to be using is how this plan is going to turn this country into China and how people who grew up in Communist, Communist China have seen it happen. The first thing is, we aren't discussing about federal government or politics. Need I remind everyone here, this is a discussion we're having about a school system at a county level. Second of all, both my parents actually grew up in Communist China, and I can tell you for a fact that they don't, they not only don't have a problem with this plan, with what this plan stands for, but they support their children being in a school system with it. My parents have been American citizens for over 20 years and are proud to be ones. They've made it abundantly clear to me over time how they love this country for its many virtues, one being its diversity. They want their children to be, they want their children to be in a school system and be safe as well as feel safe. Something a teacher told me that had a lot of relevancy was this. The DEI plan in Forsyth County schools is necessary because it begins implementing the proper and respectful conduct of inclusion in schools from a young age. Students as young as elementary school benefit from the normalization of diversity and difference and acceptance. Too often, children obtain the idea that it is acceptable and okay to use harmful words, biases, and actions towards students who are different than them. Parents are at an age where, of course, yes, their opinions can change, but they have their morals and beliefs mostly set in. Children and teenagers are the youth and are very impressionable, so actions and words are very crucial for them. Of course, the last meeting has gotten a lot better, but the opposition over the course of the past few months have really shown their true colors. Their behavior has ranged from attacking minors on social media, threatening board members at past meetings, blatantly disobeying meeting rules such as no clapping, and being extremely disruptive. As grown adults, you would think there would be a little more respect on their end, given they are grown adults and they are indeed in the presence of minors. As students, we believe we have done our part to show you what we stand for and who we really are, from being respectful and listening to following directions, giving up our time to fight for our goal, and researching to make sure we know what we're talking about. This contrast in conduct really says more about them than it does us. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. The next speaker is Eva Cardona.
Hello, I'm Eva Cardona, and I'm a junior at Denmark High School, and I'm going to be talking about the improvement of sex education. Risk comes from not knowing what you're doing. Warren Buffett. It is the responsibility of schools to teach its students the things that they need to know. We are required to learn math, science, literature, and history, things to broaden our minds. We are required to take physical education, taught to say no to drugs, lectured about puberty and our ever-changing bodies, things to keep us healthy. Yet, not all states are required to teach about one thing that it is dangerous to know nothing about: sex. Only 30 states require sex education, and out of those 30, only 18 require the education to be medically accurate. 20 states are required to inform their students about contraceptives. Georgia schools are not required to teach about contraceptives. We are required to stress abstinence and is not required to be medically accurate. Why aren't we made to learn this? Because it might be uncomfortable? It would be far more uncomfortable to be a 17-year-old girl going to school in maternity clothes or to need to be treated for chlamydia at the age of 15. Why are we, sorry, why are we not required to learn this? It is science, after all. The safety and well-being of the United States youth is being overlooked. Imagine having a neighbor, friend, or classmate who is 16 and pregnant because their school doesn't teach proper sex ed and their parents didn't have the talk with them. Helping her go through this challenging nine-month process with the added difficulty of putting up with the disapproving looks, whispers, and glares. Seeing her drop out of high school to take care of a baby she didn't want, as well as the father of the child. Seeing him work two jobs to support a kid he didn't mean to have. This isn't something a lot of people have to imagine. As of 2018, the national average of women between the ages of 15 and 19 giving birth was 17 per 1,000 women, or 1 per 58.8 women. The schools that stress abstinence and don't teach about contraceptives were more likely to have a statewide average over the national average. Georgia's average is 19.7 per 1,000 women, or 1 per 52.6. Those are just the young women who gave birth. 4.6% of women in the U.S. will have had an abortion by the age of 20. Those are brave young women who undergo a difficult and traumatic event. This is a problem, so why are we not addressing it? Over half of American teens have had sex by the time they turn 18. Why then are public schools not required to teach them about sex in all 50 states? Why are they not made to teach them how to be safe? Why is America failing its children? Why does the discomfort of a subject or the stigma of a natural part of life scare people? Are we so terrified that we are willing to put our children at risk? How then can we say that we are the home of the brave? If discomfort is all it takes to deter us, just how strong are we? As Barack Obama said, "Every young person in America deserves a world-class education." We've got an obligation to give it to them.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amanda Gibson.
Hello, my name is Amanda Gibson, and I'm a senior in high school. I want to start by thanking the Board for allowing me to speak at today's meeting. Forsyth County has a deep history of discrimination. In 1912, a white mob forced every black person in Forsyth to leave. They threatened them, they lynched them, they killed them. The same people who harassed and murdered people of color also harmed people in the LGBTQ+ community and of different religious backgrounds. Forsyth was known for being unsafe for minorities. This county has come a long way since then. The fact that I'm allowed to even stand here, here without being harmed for being gay shows the improvement that was made. Things have gotten better, but that doesn't mean that the problems this county had in the past are completely gone. We need the DEI plan because racism, homophobia, transphobia, xenophobia, et cetera, all still exist in this county. The DEI plan helps to improve the social environment in schools. It doesn't eliminate all threats of discrimination, but it is a sign of progress. It shows students that you care about them and their safety. The plan also communicates a desire to change the culture in this county from one based on prejudice to one of acceptance. The DEI plan works. I've been going to school in Forsyth since I was in kindergarten. I got redistricted twice, so I've been to five Forsyth County schools in total. As a student, I have seen the remnants of this county's past woven into the social environment at school. Students are still tearing down pride club posters and using racial slurs in the hallways. The DEI plan hasn't stopped that behavior, but it has affected how teachers respond to it. Before the plan was implemented, I had multiple teachers make joke, make jokes about ADHD. I remember this because I have ADHD, and those comments affected my mental health. During the end of middle school, I noticed less of my teachers made these jokes about mental disorders, and this was around the time when the school system started using the DEI plan. I also noticed that my teachers seemed more understanding and trustworthy. I don't understand why any would, why anyone would want to reverse those changes. I find it very concerning that we are questioning the validity of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan when we should be focusing on trying to reduce the amount of discrimination that takes place in schools. Schools are supposed to help prepare children for the future. Understanding diversity and being respectful towards others is essential for success. The DEI plan protects students and helps prepare them for the real world. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Alyssa Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Johnson. I'm a sophomore at North Forsyth High School. Thank you for giving me the opportunities to speak tonight. I would like to address the sexist and outdated policy that is our school dress code. Our school dress code has not been updated since 2012 to 2013 school year according to the dress on, or dress code only section of the Forsyth.k12.g a.us website. I know that the way we dressed in 2013 is different from now, and the dress code, it says, and I quote, "A pair or a parent that tends to draw attention to individual rather than to a learning situation must be avoided." This is saying what you're wearing is distracting others around you, and how are we supposed to know if it's distracting people if there's not really much we can do about it? People say you can't show your shoulders because it's distracting boys. I have yet to meet someone that gets distracted or turned on by the shoulders of a girl. The article says it's the administration to decide what's proper for school setting, but everyone is different, has their own opinion, so one person can think it's proper and others may not think so. The Forsyth County dress code for this year is only a copy and paste of the past ones. I know it says no tank tops and letter E, but if a guy goes to school in a jersey or tank top, he doesn't get dress coded at all because no one thinks his shoulders are hot. But if there's a girl that has a tank top on, we get told to cover up, and letter E and L is mostly towards the females because no boys wear clothes that show cleavage or how, and how high skirts and shorts can be. But some girls are born with long arms and long legs, which makes it unfair, but guys that wear shorter shorts than girls are being feminized half the time. Don't get told that they can't wear it, and there's not a letter in the dress code for guys. Us girls been told all of our lives, you can't wear this or that. Guys been told you can wear what you want. A school is a place to express who you are, but guys can show that with anything they wear, but girls have a restriction to show who they are. I understand the drug-related and gang-related, but what's the point in making that a rule if people wear clothes that show that or that even says it? I know that my school's a public school, so what should we change on what we wear from outside of the school? In this generation, girls feel comfortable in baggy clothes, and so does guys. Do y'all really think we'll be wearing fitted shirts and pants all the time? No. My friend got dress coded because she wore a fitted shirt and holy jeans one day, and she got dress coded by a male teacher because her cleavage was too much in shape and everything. People wear watches to feel comfortable to have, like, to feel comfortable, but when they don't have it on, they feel comfortable, or like, they don't really feel comfortable. This is the same way people feel about changing accessories. They also mentioned your shirt cannot show your stomach when you put your hands on. Now, who will look at a girl's hand, like stomach, when she raises her hands?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Shiva Metta.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Shiva Metta, and I am a current freshman at Alliance Academy. My pronouns are she/her. Xenophobia is real. Recently, signs were put up in Forsyth County... Recently, signs were put up in Forsyth County against my religion, Hinduism. The signs had the word "NO" capitalized with a dot representing the bindi at the top of the letter O. Upon seeing this hateful signage, I was absolutely horrified. I also felt excluded from my community. However, I was not surprised that people have such hatred in their hearts. After all, this isn't my first time experiencing racism or xenophobia or discrimination. It has been proven time and time again that discrimination negatively impacts students' performance. In Jane Elliot's famous discriminatory exercise, students were discriminated against based on eye color. Students of a specific eye color were treated as superior, quote unquote, one day and, quote unquote, inferior the next. In Elliot's exercise, the group of students discriminated against performed academically poorer than the group treated superiorly. Currently, we are seeing Hindu students like myself largely discriminated against. This is bound to affect mental health and academic performance. This discrimination was easily preventable had DEI programs been more prevalent in our school district. The DEI plan would influence our community to be more inclusive, effectively preventing displays of hatred such as the recent xenophobic attacks on my community. It is important to note, however, that the DEI plan would not just benefit Hindus such as myself. The DEI plan benefits all, regardless of political ideology, race, gender, or any quality or characteristic that may set me apart from the person that I'm sitting next to. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Suhash Pankar.
Good evening, Forsyth Board of Education. My name is Suhash Reddy, a student at South Forsyth and a co-founder of a local language tutoring program called TT, Telugu and Tamil Tutor. The other co-founders are Kritika Kasareddy, Vinay Palaku, and Ratika Vimalapalli. Telugu and Tamil are two of the largest South Indian languages and are particularly popular among the shifting demographic of students in the county. I'm not here to promote our organization or highlight the prevalence of cultural linguistics among students. In fact, I'm here to highlight the opposite. The podcast we run revolves around asking people our age about what they think about South Asian culture. We expected many of their responses to be about pride and growth, but ended up realizing the polar contrast. Many guests claimed they did not feel welcome to show their true self, so they restricted that side of them when they went to school. Talking to them more and more, we realized measures needed to be taken. The fact of the matter is that Forsyth County is losing its identity, especially from students who are the ones who carry on the leg, who, especially from students who are the ones to carry on the legacy. And for that to happen, we need to work with you guys, individuals that can help us get our voices heard. To satisfy the Forsyth Governance Goal Number Four of 2021, we believe that more representation and creating a sense of community cohesion is necessary to tighten it the South Asian student community and, in a sense, make our large schools feel small. The time is now to act on these issues, especially with the current news of Asian Americans. And we get it. A more diverse and numerous student body makes it a challenge for everyone's opinion to be heard. We appreciate you putting Hindu holidays on the Forsyth school calendar, allowing cultural events to occur at schools, and aiding in parking. We are one of the few districts that invests in these projects for the community. We commend you for this. But these are not the only right steps. Start where students are immediately impacted. For example, delegate cricket, a major Indian sport, as a letter. Add cultural foods to the food, to the school menu on special days. Form an international council to address these problems. The sad thing is that many of these ideas have been implemented before in the county but were removed from minor and lacking funding. Forsyth has this, we just need to re-implement it. The future of the reintroduction of these initiatives is optimistic, especially with more students now willing to accept them and eventually bond over them. At the end of the day, although minor implementation may identify the county as being culturally representative, educating high school students of the importance of respecting other cultures and making more students feel comfortable about sharing their heritage will strengthen the community's voice. Again, we commend you for the steps you have made, but this is only a meter, this is only a meter in the right direction. Thank you.
The next speaker is Robert McLaughlin.
Secretary, this is documentation to support the comments I'm going to be making tonight. Good evening. I speak to you tonight regarding DEI as a taxpayer and a father of two children in Forsyth schools. I also speak as one who has since childhood has sought out, lived in, and worked in multicultural and multiracial environments. I was therefore disturbed to hear from high school speakers at last month's board meeting that students have been known to shout out racial epithets in school hallways with apparent impunity. Other students report that they've been made to feel physically unsafe. If this is so, we don't need to create a new DEI program with expensive administrators. This kind of misconduct is directly addressed by the Student Code of Conduct. I trust that the board, principals, and administrators will fulfill their duty by enforcing current policy. If somehow you and they were not to do that, then instituting DEI would serve no purpose. As you know, in leadership, there are no substitutes for character or competence. Many parents have expressed fears that DEI is linked to socialism through critical race theory. Through her research, my wife has already demonstrated that many assumptions, concepts, and proposals in the district DEI training materials do in fact derive directly from CRT. On June 1st, she mailed each board member an eight-page summary of her findings. Critical race proponents themselves openly acknowledged their neo-Marxist and postmodern roots to update Joe Louis's famous quote, "Lots of things wrong with America, but Marxism ain't gonna fix them." More likely, a politicized and ideological environment would instead foster division, extremism, and incompetence. It's a good first step that you as a board have suspended DEI training. It's time to rethink and redo DEI in a way that fulfills the motto displayed on the wall right behind you: Quality learning and superior performance for all. That is the true DEI program, and it benefits everyone, especially disadvantaged students. Your unique contribution is to provide Forsyth students with a first-class education. Combined with wisdom and good character, this is indispensable for success as an adult. Many students, including students of color, unknowingly possess untapped potential. When Forsyth educators insist that each student discover and obtain his or her full potential, they open doors of opportunity that can transform that student's entire life. Let's not waste that potential. Let's put it to maximum use with a simple yet real DEI program. Demand excellence incessantly. Thank you.
Next speaker is Carolyn Andrews. Michael Vadez, I don't see him here. And then last, Emily Mariano.
My name is Emily Mariano. I'm a mom of a Forsyth County student. We moved our family here to avoid CRT, DEI, and SEL. I'm a business owner and a woman falling into one of your underrepresented groups. And as a Forsyth County taxpayer, I'm a stakeholder for this board. We have anti-bullying campaigns. We have the No Child Left Behind Act. We have state funding to provide for kids in need. We've heard today about a teacher protecting and helping a trans student before this plan. Let's bolster those things. But what a specific DEI plan does is simply try to pacify a mob of far-left ideology. This plan is nothing but caving to woke-ism creeping across our country, clearly because people are afraid of their reputation being tarnished. The DEI plan is nothing but monitoring, coddling, and accommodating subgroups clearly indicated as being based on race, ethnicity, and gender identification, muddled in a list of other basic human differences. This has nothing to do with education. You all know where this direction of special treatment goes, and it's not towards unity. Choosing anyone for any role based on what this plan calls falling into an underrepresented group is racism, sexism, and a gross overstep of ideological authority. I am sending my children to public schools here. I chose this school district because I want them to learn hard academics, not gender roles and emotional learning about feelings and ideology. DEI is indoctrination, not education. America is a melting pot, regardless of what the media would like you to believe. Giving special treatment to a group of people based on your definition of underrepresented is confusing to young American children. Telling kids they need more help or less because they're either a majority or a minority is divisive and not the education for our children that we moved to this county for. This plan is insulting to female, Black, Hispanic, and LGBT residents because it groups them into monolithic thinking and literally labels them by subgroup based on those characteristics. I came here today to encourage all of you to look through the lens of the America that our founding fathers and Martin Luther King Jr. fought for, one where all men are created equal and we only get as much as we are willing to work for out of life. I want my children to work hard. I want them to be proud of where their hard work gets them. And most of all, I want them to want things in life and know that the only way to get there is to work their tails off. Do not vote to implement DEI in Forsyth County schools. I'm telling you now, it's a doorway to the end of true education, and I will remove my kids from the system before I let them be indoctrinated. I'll be back every month if I have to, and I'm not alone. A lot of parents don't even understand what you're implementing here, and I believe it's predatory and wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public participation. Next up, we have points of information. Dr. Bearden, anything?
Nothing outstanding.
All right. Any committee reports, anything going on? Tommy, have anything? All right. At that, I'll take a motion to go into executive session for personnel as per the affidavit.
Summons.
Motion by Tom.
Sorry.
Second by Wes, all in favor? Is that unanimous? Thank you.